All right, welcome everyone to the Thursday, May sixteenth, Tim of planning commission regular meeting. First order of business is the welcome everyone and call to order. Our next order is to review the agenda. We are actually going to eliminate the energy section for tonight as Jeremy is not going to be with us. But we will be getting a town plan update from Gail. So that's the only thing that's changed there. Anybody else has anything they want to add or subtract? All right, we can approve the minutes.
I didn't see anything that stuck out to me, you know. They'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I had minutes on where it's the power, every mountain power of the line going to Paula. That was to replace power there and I thought that should have these stores maybe or something.
It was, it was a fact that they were going to link. There was supposedly a talk of them putting in a substation and linking this line to the line to complete a circuit to follow.
So there's a lot of businesses that, and I thought we would seven by the railroad yard.
Well, they'll bring it down to Dandy and then.
Then shoot it back to Paul. But I knew, I knew, I saw that was from Paul and I just saw that.
Yeah, because there is no. Really.
I don't know for that same place. Some places are breaking the loop and what they want to do is make sure that.
Then they could go both ways.
Yeah, because now when it breaks, it's out of the, out of the loop.
Yeah, out of the.
Well, Tim, it's there's a break if you go down by Crow Hill, there's a break there and that's why we lose power on one end of Tim and not the other.
Yeah, there's another one right out here. We could have power and Wilbur's not or vice versa. The school could have it and we don't have it.
That's more true of breaker than it's really been at all.
Yeah. So anyways, did somebody second Judy's motion?
Second, I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we've approved the minutes. The needs assessment report. Did everyone take a look at it?
Yeah.
What did you think?
I think that for the questions that they put on it, I think that they were pretty much what we thought it would do because it pretty much followed the town planning. The other section, there was something that came off that for different, you know, that was interesting, you know, the section about what they liked about Tim and what they didn't like. I think something came up there that made something we could investigate. Now let's see if we can. You know, do the, do something with it.
I agree, I concur. I mean, it basically like told us everything that we already know.
Right.
You know, and, and there are.
Run right track there.
You know, there's one or two people that, you know, really want lake access, which that's probably not going to happen. From a planning standpoint, like we're just, you know. The town went down that, that road a few years ago and you know, the voters didn't want to have.
The extra property.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, it was, you know, they, I mean, because it was like, what, like four hundred thousand dollars or something and that was, you know, that's a lot to justify. Not a lot to justify for other things. But the different question, that's a different.
Would anybody there like consider a life estate to leave the house, a house that they had to the town? Something like that? I don't know who lives up there. I don't, I've never been, so I don't know, you know. I've never had.
Some residents on the pond have said, if you want to go swimming, you just have to give them a call, but I don't know if anybody's tried that.
I think the, the issue becomes one, I don't think. People who own property on the way like really want to, I think they like the fact that. You know, people are welcome, but they need to be asked. And if there is a public access, then it becomes. Instead of being a, you know, a little, yeah, it's a slow, it is a slow moving lake, like most of the, the water skiers are generally like, it's, it's, it's not very big. And so if it. If you, if you open it up to. If you open it up to, you know, public access, then you have the potential for a lot of other types of recreation that would be. I mean, it's, it's a quiet night. It's a, a kayaking and you know, there is water skiing and stuff on it, but it's not, you know, in the middle of summer, that's what they do, but it's generally very low key.
Okay, and they like to keep.
I think they like to keep it that way.
Yeah, somebody a few years ago that thought about doing that, but it turned out, you know, they have their own seventy five feet of frontage. So you might be able to get parked two cars there. So who's going to decide in town who gets.
Who gets to be there? Yeah, okay, can worms.
Yeah. But there are a number of people that ask, you know, they're willing to let you go swim or put in a boat or go fishing or something.
So what else was jumping out at people?
It was something about unoccupied how homes in Tim, it has a number like a baby four homes or something.
I thought that seemed high.
Yeah, that seems.
Yeah, I think some of the information on the various inside color. Oh, yeah, that's the demographics. I think we're off. I mean, I challenged. The total population when the first report came through and said seven hundred and seventy three. And I said, in two thousand and twenty, we had five hundred and fifty three. I think I would have noticed two hundred people moving to town. And so Greg said that it was a. An estimate by somebody somewhat associated with the census. And I said, well, I don't know where they're getting their numbers from. And, and I didn't look at the rest of them. I was just trying to get the five hundred and fifty three back or, you know. It's a, in twenty ten, we had six hundred and thirteen or six hundred and twenty three. And we didn't think we'd lost that many.
Vacant housing units ninety seven.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we need to determine what vacant houses are.
Yeah.
Is it a vacation home or is it like Baloo's house?
Right.
That's your house. So I will try to dish that information.
Or is it just an empty wall?
Right. No, it's not a, it's a sense of vacant housing units. So it's not an empty.
And I, and that's a dangerous, you know, oh yeah, there's almost a hundred vacant houses, you know, if vacant houses are lake houses, you know. Seasonal, seasonal camps, hunting camps, like, I mean, yeah, there's probably ninety seven structures that you can sleep in that might have electricity or some form of plumbing, but they are not. You know, they're occupied at certain portions of the year and they are not meant to be residential homes.
That's the thing when somebody says we have a housing shortage and you see that.
And then are they counting like Elvis' house and her camp? They count those as two separate units?
Yeah, those would be two separate units.
And that's a, I mean, that is a vacant house.
Not lovable, but yeah, there's vacant houses. It is.
So if you can't trust this information, you know.
Yeah.
Which we kind of knew that going into this as it's not necessarily to trust the information, but to get a, you know, a thumbnail sketch of, you know. The town as a whole, but not you, not utilized. I mean, we really shouldn't be utilizing statistics and facts as, you know. We need to take them with an interpretation because they're given to us with, you know.
Right. Well, this is some of the information that we're going to need to put into town plan. So we need to make it right before we put it into town plan.
Yeah.
Does the total housing units look correct? I was just wondering that myself. Three hundred thirty eight? I didn't know if I have a copy of them.
Change more in line with the total households two forty one and housing industry thirty eight. It should be closer, I think. To that figure, households and the housing units. Unless you consider the vacation homes, if there's a difference between two forty one and three thirty eight. Might be the, the units that are unoccupied.
Yeah, but I don't, and I don't think we should utilize, I mean, I don't think you can use those as, you know.
Vacant. I mean, to me vacant means nobody's ever there.
Yeah.
But if somebody's there even. One week out of the year, if it's their house, that's their prerogative.
And I, and I, you know, the term housing unit, you know, like that implies that it is a, a property or a house that is. In the market to be, you know, utilized in some way.
Not too many two. Two unit houses in town.
No, but just in, you know, like unoccupied units, you know, it's like.
Right, but what I'm saying.
Could you consider like Gettle's house unoccupied? Cause he's not there very often. Is that what Tony people talk about?
That's an interesting quote. Yeah, I mean, that's.
When there's people down there only here a couple of weeks of the year.
Yeah.
Months, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, what's, what's occupied versus unoccupied?
Yeah, I mean, does an Airbnb follow in vacant housing unit? Cause somebody doesn't live there permanently?
Um, that, didn't they pass a law? I think the governor vetoed it, but. I think that there's going to be an increase, like a substantial increase in Airbnb. Like one percent.
Oh, tax.
A tax, yeah.
Short term rentals, but I don't know what the definition of short term rental is. Yeah, I'm sure it's in this. So I will try to get some answers to that and. Um.
I mean, the word fake. That's a big word.
Yeah, well, there's bacon, there's.
I think they came up with the three hundred and thirty eight housing units because. We have four hundred and forty seven properties. Ninety eight that are ninety nine that are good line of miscellaneous and one utility. So that's how they get to three hundred and thirty eight, but of that, there's. Ninety nine residential R ones, which is a house of less than six acres is a hundred and twenty eight R twos, which is a house of more than six acres. There's forty homes, there are sixty eight seasonal and three commercials, so. I think we need to better define what we mean by. Vacant and residential units.
We're short on space.
Because some of those are twos. That a hundred and twenty eight R twos are actually seasonal homes, but if it's built as a rest regular house, we have to list it as a big regular house. We don't list it by its use. We list it by how it's constructed. Which it makes it confusing sometimes when they do the sales study because over the lake, there are some of those that are built as houses, but they show up. In the housing thing and it's like they're out of whack with the other houses because they're at the lake.
What defines a, a permanent housing from, is it a foundation? Is it insulation? I mean, what's the definition between a camp and a house?
A camp typically you couldn't live in year round. A house you can, it's weatherized, you can live in it year round. It's, it's construction. If it's, you know, if it's two by four construction and it's just a little camp. It's a camp, but if it's, you know, like your house, even if it's on the lake and it's seasonal, it's still considered an R one because it's built like a house.
Don't we have a, um. Our specifications for camps? Isn't it in our zoning, we have the requirements for.
Hunting camps.
Hunting camps, yeah.
That's, you know, less than six hundred square feet and it's on twenty five acres.
Yeah.
Out in the boonies and you only use it for forty five days a year.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
So if you have enough property and you have like four or five camps, you can just move from one camp to the next.
My knowledge, we don't have anybody that does that.
Well, if someone's going to go to tho- those lengths, then they're absolutely not going to tell you that that's what they're doing.
That's true. That's an interesting concept.
Right, you know? Just one six hundred square foot. I don't think we have the acreage. I don't think anyone has the acreage fully around here. Okay, what else?
I didn't get the email.
Can ring through it.
It has all of the, you know, the. It has all of the. Comments too.
You want your one copy? This is a cleaner copy. You should have that one. I didn't have it. It turns out if you print from the computer to the copier, you get a cleaner copy like this, but if you make a copy and then copy the copy, it gets pretty sloppy looking.
They got the one for the meeting in the agenda, but I don't want to put this on there. The only attachment I had was meetings and the.
There it is. There we have, there's the email.
And he says if you.
My only head first to.
Cause it said that he made a printed copy that you know. So. Anyway, she got time to look it over. It's not like we have to decide anything about it tonight, but it is.
Yeah, it's just a little bit of data that we can.
Probably eliminate all of this ones when you got one comment. You kind of got to toss it out. Because it's, doesn't represent enough. The only thing that, that. Really bothers me about these is that we don't get enough participations.
Yeah.
In my opinion anyway, it's not a bad turnout, but it's probably the same people that show up at the town meetings.
Right, well, the interesting thing about surveys, a lot of times you're lucky to get five percent. We mailed out five hundred to everybody that gets tails and we got back ninety five. Yeah. Online, but that's a pretty good percentage area of returns.
Sounds bad.
I did find the difference between one and three interesting. I mean, I. They both ranked high on five, but one was higher than three was. Preserve the rural character of Tim and then protect and preserve scenic and historic features, open spaces, fragile and wildlife habitats and other natural resources. To me, they seem very similar, but. One had. Much higher significance than the other one did. Well, number one was almost to sixty. Yeah. And number three was a little over sixty, but if you add four and five together. That gets eighty for one and. Honestly, not quite eighty. Yeah, I think it's important to people. Yeah. Like Tim must be way it is. Yeah.
Or they like to see the develop, as development happens, they, you know, I'm, I'm actually thinking about the, the. Leftly subdivision up there.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of those houses are not going to be seen from the road. I mean, you're going to see driveways, but you're still going to see, I mean. Most of us, you know, we like driving around, looking at the scenery, like it is, and so, you know, you can have, you know, and that's, that's part of our goal here is to like, make sure that. You know, when houses are built, you know, they're situated in a way and. I mean, ultimately, you know, people have a right to build a house where they want to, and it's our ability to persuade them that. This way, you know, makes the town look better and keeps property taxes, you know. Well, probably not property taxes, but it, it maintains the value of people in town. I think, I mean, I. Instead of, yeah, and I, I think that that has a very, that has a very high value to everyone in town as we have.
You helped mention, you mentioned the house down on the mountain view, the great white house that's in the middle of the field. So that, that precipitated us changing the ag overlay.
That got us to do an ag overlay.
But they just put the house there and.
Well, it was built many years ago by Beth Davis Rickman. That was her field of dreams and then she ended up moving to Long Island. But you know, that's got us to thinking that was a nice ag field. So that's why we created an ag district that said, try to keep. As much protected for agriculture as we could. You know, if you look at the house that Grant Reynolds built, where Lila Parker is now. That looks like it's in the middle of a field, but it's not. It's actually thirty five feet from its property line because this little house here owns that field on the side. So Grant's house, well. Was like a sore thumb when it was first built and Grant didn't build it. He bought it. Somebody else, Kevin Brown, actually. You know, everybody was used to looking. Down off in the, the distance, but we all got used to it. It's there, but it is actually thirty five feet from the property. You know, where you wanted to go.
Patty brought that up. She said, when I brought up what you had said about the White House being in the field, I said, well, what about Grant's house? I said, I said, I don't know. Maybe it was before they had the zoning, but it was.
But it was off to the engine and didn't take away. I mean, the steep off the other end of the house on the east side.
Yeah. You had that, so that's where you would put the house.
Yeah.
And because the property line is so close, that's, that's what they did, that's.
Cause when I was up at Spur Manure on Valentine. I asked Josh Allen, where is he putting the house? Cause those were some I'd been up there. He says, all right, there, if you got up the road, driveway is going to reach, it's barely going to even impact that field.
Yeah.
So us, we were pretty happy with that. The driveway impacted the other field pretty good, but we didn't care. That was steeper than hell anyway.
Right, so that's one reason we have the egg overlays to encourage people that they're going to build, to build near the edges.
Yeah.
Keep as much of the field open as possible.
He was pretty, I don't know, talking to me. We're discussing about that. And that's, that means more to me. I think. Both that thing else and he was agreeing.
But I couldn't figure it out. You have the map. We didn't want to look at it. That's the map for what?
Yeah.
I get confused.
I mean, we don't have to go over the entire thing tonight, but it's, you know.
Well, looking at what do you like about Tim, if you lump the twenty six said rural character, eight said privacy, peacefulness. Isolation, he talked about natural scenic beauty. If you lump all those together, that's fifty people right there, just about that. Forty, but.
But they made a comment, I mean.
Yeah.
To, to get someone to take the, the questionnaires, one thing, but to get them to comment even more, I mean, cause most people aren't going to leave it. Or generally you don't leave comments.
I, I was surprised. At some of the things that came up and it was like you had one. One person saying one thing and the other was totally polar opposite. And you say one and one, and you say, I wonder if you put them in a room together, what would happen? Because they, there's, what opinions were totally opposite and they probably lived in the same town, probably it's equal amount of time.
Well, sometimes they could be in the same household too.
It might be, right, that's true. So Larry, what did Chris say that was opposite?
She, she was pretty happy.
So the recreation committee met on Monday. And they were not happy that Frisbee Golf Course got such a low score.
Hello, I, I do actually, yeah.
People on there that really like Frisbee Golf, I mean, you know, they want a Frisbee Golf Course. It doesn't seem as popular as it was several years ago. At least I don't care about it as much anymore.
I, I don't think it's, it was actually ever that popular. Like, I think it was just. One or two people that really liked it around here and wanted to make a public Frisbee Golf, I mean. A walking trail. I mean, we see that, you know, people want to do things on the weekends. They want to do things with children and they want to do things with, you know.
Their families.
Their families, like that's, you know, that is, that is the big push. And that does not, that doesn't include Frisbee Golf.
There's pickleball was mentioned and they had the pickleball and they, they put their line sound on this community center, the pickleball.
Yeah.
But they played there.
It's either seven cents lack of country store, general store, other commercial spaces in the Paul Center. We've had a general store and something, it's never done good though.
So I actually started thinking about that this week and. You know, and instead of looking at it as a detriment, I thought about that as more of an asset. Um, we don't, it's the stuff that we don't have that makes this area kind of unique. We don't have that. I mean, we, I mean, we've grown up having to drive ten miles and everyone else has, you know, you, that's just what you have to do. You don't have that convenience, like that's, and I was thinking about it, it's like, it's actually kind of in a, in a certain regard, it is kind of nice. Like we don't have lights on at all hours of the day and night, you know, we don't have gas, I mean. Would it be nice? Would it be a convenience? Possibly, but I was just, I was just kind of thinking about it as, you know, it's, it's not necessarily a bad thing that we don't have a lot of heavy traffic. Through town.
When Bob Noble was on the planning commission, he said, the place to have a store is at the intersection of. East Road and one forty. Cause a lot of traffic comes down East Road past your house and comes down one forty. If you're going to over here. You know, there's a lot of traffic goes down east road back. They never get to this side of town, but if you wanted to have something, that would be the place to have it.
Be, they never have time to stop.
We could put a.
Turn Baloo's house into a general store.
We could put, we could put a commercial development right there.
It's hard for general store, a little smile.
It is. We've had it several times, you know, down here.
Kind of getting it was the general stores we had didn't last long.
Well, most of us are frugal enough that if. We'll wait till we go.
When I go to Rutland, I shop for months worth of groceries.
Yeah.
So. Of course, I get meat and milk and all that at the farm, so I don't worry about perishables, but. You know. But I just don't go around that often. So when I do go, I try to make sure, make it worth it.
And most of us, I think if you forget something at the store, oh well, I'll just wait till next time that I go in. We're not like city people. Oh, I'll just hop in my car and drive five minutes and go get it. No, I'll wait till next week or.
Yeah.
Make a special trip on Saturday and do something else or.
But we still get gas delivered to the farm. There's not a lot of places that will do that, but we still get the farm vehicles and jeans halls and all that. But beats driving to Longford where we need five gallons of gas for jeans halls or lawnmower. Truck or whatever.
And I think that that is actually something that is, it's not unique, but that is one of the quirks of living where we live is, you know, you have to plant, like you have to think about, that, that's why like. Of the affordable housing, I like that concept doesn't really swing because there's lots of like typically like.
You have to drive both.
You have to drive.
Drive to, to get to anything.
And like around here, it's like you're either driving to work or you're working from, you know, you're, or you're not working. It's just.
You're working from home or you're a stay at home dad, mom, whatever.
Or you're self-employed and you're, you're doing stuff around, you know, and it's, it just doesn't. The, the way that this town has evolved over time is, you know, it's. Geographically, it is isolated enough. I mean, it's isolated enough, the, like the soils are poor enough that you, it gets difficult to build houses. It's difficult to grow crops. Just difficult enough, but just good enough that it's, you know, and, and it's, it's like a, an odd little like, you know, quirk of how, you know, people. Exactly to the point of you will wait until you go into Rutland because that is, and that's just kind of part and partial of. Like how people are around here, like, but you just wait, like you just wait till you have a reason to go.
I think it's, it's a lifestyle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Basically, you, well, I was talking about that with my wife and I said, it's, it's, I said, cause I have friends that moved from the city. It's along before I moved here and they, you, you have a lifestyle, you, you have to accept the lifestyle and that's part of it. I used to, the guys at work when I used to. Being I used to tell them, I gotta drive eighteen miles to Rutland to get this or that. And they said, that far, I said, yeah, but I have, you know, maybe two traffic lights and a stop. I said, you guys live in Long Island, it takes you an hour to drive one mile or a half mile, you know, because. When Patty visited relatives in Long Island, they didn't, she said, well, let's go to, you know, Staples said, oh no, that'll take over an hour. And it was like, you could almost see it from the house. So I mean, you know, I, I look at it that way, you know, it's, you plan ahead and you think about it and it's a lifestyle. Let's see what you want to do.
Yeah.
I think it's a desire. The town burns.
Um, are we good so far looking through that? I mean, if we want to, if we want, we can keep looking at it, but I was, I'm thinking that. We want to review it some more at another meeting or.
Well, maybe we should just make questions on some of the statistics.
Yeah.
Unoccupied houses and maybe go back to, to, well. The person who formulated this and asked, you know, the definition of those words, and I think that would help.
But I would say that our questions are generally, you know, tracking very well with, you know, our, our current plan and the plan that we're. I don't see a need to change anything for.
No, I think that was right on.
Yeah.
And I think if we were going to look at things, just look at something that's. And I think if we were gonna look at things, just look at something that's not in the first fifteen questions, that is kinda like different, that we might wanna look into.
Yeah. I mean, well.
So, in, in your ideas for, the recreation, it says, link snowmobile and ATV trail. I can tell you right now, they linked AVD trails to, our snowmobile trail wasn't from that. Because we've got trails that don't touch a road. So we don't wanna snow, AVD driving across them. That's, cause VAS is actually approached us. About that, we told them no. Because, yes, most people stop and shut gates and be respectful, and I go across fields, it's that certain few. And I don't wanna call it midnight saying, hey, your cows are out.
Yeah.
Been there, done that, don't wanna do that.
Or they miss the fact that there was a gate, and now they're hurt, and.
And they've tried to sue you, cause well, it's your fault. So, we just, I think they, they're gonna find a lot of landowners and farmers won't let that happen.
Um, what do you, so here's an, I, uh, a question about, because there's a lot of, um, AT, not necessarily ATVs, but the side-by-sides, like, a lot of people use side-by-sides. And I think Danby, a couple of years ago, I think they started permitting, four-wheelers and side-by-sides to be used on dirt roads.
What's a side-by-side?
It's a, basically a. But they're faster, they're big, I mean, and then you've got, it's seating for two to six people.
Right.
I mean, they're, gators are a little slow.
Ours only do, do twenty-five, but it's a work model.
Yeah. But I, I mean, I.
I thought that Danby started it, and then they stopped.
I think it did get stopped.
Cause I think it got stopped, but Wells does allow four-wheelers on some of their backroads. But I haven't gotten, been able to get the information, like a map or anything.
Pittsburgh, New Hampshire will let snowmobiles and ATVs on their trail. You have to buy the permits and all of that. But they're logging roads, so, that's okay. You just are re, ready to have a lot of flat tires for the snowmobile studs. The loser studs in the track, and then they'll pop tires, but.
Right. I wasn't thinking so much for snowmobiles as I was thinking about side-by-sides on dirt roads.
Yeah.
Um, as a, from a planning perspective, because, there's lots of people that do that already.
Would that be something more for like a class four road, like, the road that goes over to West Timoth?
Golf Lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, I mean, you're not gonna get much.
But you have to get to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna drive your truck with a trailer and get to it and go down and back, or, you know, if you wanna drive from here, can you do?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I mean, we, we're on dead end roads, where they're gonna go. They get up to the, where the road ends, and they got fences to go through.
I guess I was looking at it as more of, um, just in general, with more people getting razors and side-by-sides, like, it will be, um, we will, we will see them on, and, you know, do you wanna think about, or does the town wanna think about, you know, a position or a policy, and I, personally, from my personal perspective, I would rather see them than not. Um, but that, I mean, because people are gonna be driving them around more and more.
I think if we wanted to entertain it, no offense, but that would be a more of a north-ended town deal, because you have more dirt roads that are connected, at the north end of town than you do at the south end of town.
Yeah, and also up, you know, up on the, uh, the west side of town, that's where the other large majority of, um, dirt roads and possibly four-by-fours exist.
Gettall, not a huge fan of snowmobile, or, um, the ATVs or side-by-sides.
Yeah.
He doesn't mind us driving our shoe there, but most time we're using it for farm one, so.
Yeah, but again, like, there's no real, I mean, the road stops there, you know, I mean, it's.
It's far away from there.
Yeah.
He wants us to pick it up better, and we told him no. Cause we don't want people driving their cars.
Well, it's, it's thrown up, it's not a, it's, it's, it can never be a, a town road.
Yeah, but you look at Google, and Google has Pucker Street going pretty far into their.
All the way out to, uh, the field behind your houses, where kind of, um, I'm around Black Gattle Sisters.
Can be.
Where her right of way is, goes all the way out to there, well, that's not right.
Right.
And that's the problem with having information that is not correct. You know, from when they make it to going forward in a hundred, oh yeah, well, this has been, identified from Google Maps a hundred years ago that this was actually blocked, you know? That, that's why ha- having as accurate of information in our documents, you know, and not just information that someone, conjures up and decides to use because it, it fits a narrative at the time, like, that's, eh, that's my, you know, one of my big.
We, we had somebody drives their car up, up on the hill, I went up on him, chased him with a gator. What you doing? Oh, we're trying to find our way to the old spring road, we gotta go back down the tar and go about half a mile. Well, according to Google, you can go out this way, well, that road's been thrown up since before I was born.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I have to say, though, guilty as charged, not on your place, but when we were looking, when we were driving around, and we would follow the Google map, and a couple of times we found ourselves, thinking we were gonna make that loop, and you couldn't, and having to apologize for going on land that we weren't supposed to.
I think I scared him more than anything, cause I'm, I'm chasing him with a gator. You don't wanna keep going, you know, destroy the bottom of your car, but.
Yeah.
I just tried to replay it, but like, you know, where are you headed going, what are you looking for?
Well, is there something that we could do about Google, then? I mean, will they, you know, they're behemoths?
Notch, they always keep trucks getting stuck because it's on their GPS.
Yeah, yep.
But my driveway, because Patty got a sign that said RR SVP Ranch, and it didn't say private on it, cause when she did, the green sign, it was, our driveway is on the map as a road, like. Because of, because, but then it didn't have, you know, she didn't know, she put sign-ups that put this up, and, next thing I know, it was on a map. I said, I said, you could, told people, you gotta find out places on the map. There's the driveway listed.
It's funny, on, on our farm down there, in RD, we kinda have four-wheelers on, which.
Right, that's the land trust thing.
Land trust.
We can't do four-wheelers on the road up to the town property. You can have snowmobiles, but you can't have.
Yeah. And that was more, explaining to me was more, the four-wheelers did a lot more image in the springtime and stuff going on trail or something, rather than snowmobiles. I really didn't like that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, yeah.
I mean, I mean, but, it's the same thing as somebody that, you know, one rotten apple in the basket, takes the trail, allows you to dislocate or something.
Yeah.
Makes a mess of them, but the snowmobiles, they're all capable of that.
That's what's in the wintertime, you know, it's frozen.
The owner can drive. But that's, uh, I don't wanna police, uh, you hire somebody.
Again, like, how do you enforce, I mean, that would be a massive, you know. Um, how about town plan update?
Town plan update. Some things. We've got the little grant to do the, energy section, but Jeremy couldn't come tonight because he doesn't have the contract done yet, so hopefully he'll be coming to the dream meeting. And I asked Jennifer Tripple, who did the town report this year, if she would help us with the editing and stuff of this, so I gave her, a copy that Ed has done to date, and what he, his markup copy, and so she's gonna compare the two. And in Ed's version, which I think I emailed all of you, where it's yellow, that means there's something that we still have to do. So she's supposed to be coming up with the list of what Ed didn't get done, and what we have to do so we can finish that, and the other part is the energy section, which we'll be dealing with, with, um, Jeremy at some point. So that's the, the update. I sort of let, let it sit on the back burner, but now I've got somebody that's willing to, do some editing that needs to be, and she knows how to, she knows her way around it, so. That's the update. Cause before you know it, September of twenty-five is gonna be here, so.
How about, how about the village, uh?
Village Trust Initiative. Yeah, so, um, they had the Zoom meeting. And, um, these were the notes that I took, that, um, their opinion is that small places, matter in a changing world, so that small is good, so that's seems good for us, and, um, they offer wraparound services. So, there was a lot of details in terms of what needed to be done, um. They, let's see, let's talk about, do I have another two, yeah? I know. Um, just that we need a five oh one C three, which I don't know if the historic, society has that, or if the town, I mean, you know more about the ins and outs of all of these things in terms of, what they're demanding from the town, right? Do you wanna speak to that, or should I?
Well, you can keep going, and I'll fill in at the end if I, if you miss anything, how's that?
Okay, so, um, so the five criteria, criteria was that the town had to be five hundred to twenty-five hundred, had to be incorporated. Serving more than one community is okay, so it could be something that happened here that other towns could use as well. Um, revitalize the town village, site control for the long haul, and longevity of ownership. So, and whatever would, we would apply for would have to be endorsed by the select board. So, it would just be a matter of, I was thinking in terms of last time we were here talking about the old creamery, and that this was a project that, would fit what they were talking about, if, the idea of making it into a museum, but also as a town market, and, um.
That's a big approval on the survey.
Yeah, I saw that, and if we did something like that, I mean, they're talking about your base, grant would be a hundred thousand, up to about four hundred and fifty, but that's only twenty-five percent of the monies. Um, so, they would, we would have to come up with a lot more money, that was my understanding, that they had other grants lined up that you could, could, uh, add on to it, to make it work, but the first step would be, um, putting in the form to show any interest that we would have, by May twenty-four, so we'd have to make sure that everybody thought it was a good idea, that the select board would be behind it. And then,
May twenty-fourth of this year?
Yes, like, in nine days, or, or seven, no, but.
You could just, you could just send it in, and we could ask for, if they would be interested later.
No, well. Yeah, but.
You can blame me.
Yeah, okay, that's good, yeah.
So it's interesting, they don't want the town to do it, they want a different group of people. And so, the, the select, yep. The select board had asked the regional planning commission, they have these other little mini-grants, and one of them they put in, said was, see if we can find some money for the old creamery. Well, a couple of days ago, somebody from, historic preservation, or one of the groups that's, working on this initiative here, followed me and said, hey, we got this from the regional commission, they wanna know, you know, this sounds like it'd be a good project for this, and she went into the whole thing here, and I said, yeah, except that, you know, we have a lot of what you guys are trying to create. You know, they wanna, a community that has, a, a village trust, it's not municipality. They want, you know, to have a place where people can meet and do this and do that, and, well, I said, well, we have the community center, and we have the old firehouse, and we have a community fund that helps people, and she says, well, I said, you, it sounds like you wanna do these for other towns to get to where we are, and she says, well, that's true. She says, but we also want projects that are, that we can jump on right of way and go do something with. And I said, I described what we had done to the old creamery so far. So I think we can fill this out, Anne, if we say we're friends of the old creamery. And we don't have to get definitive yet, they are willing to help us figure out a use for it, cause I said, we don't have a purpose yet, we've, discussed all these different things, and she said, well, that's part of what the money could be used for, is to help you determine, you know, what exactly the town wants it used for. So I left that meeting thinking, it's not for us, and then after this woman called, she got me all excited, and said, well, I think we should at least, you know, try for it, if we can get it fixed up for something, she said, they wouldn't do a museum, for the historic society, but they would do, they were excited that we'd put the porch on, and the people were using the porch, and we had the, bake oven, and so, I think it's worth exploring more, we don't have to formally apply for it, we have to get permission to apply for grants from the select board. But this is just an initiative, they're gonna look through things and try to pick, a certain number of, towns to work with for the next few years. And overall, they wanna do twenty, but they're trying to find seven for this year, and they, you know, it depends on, how much help any particular, town needs to do something, or what they wanna do, and so they might have seven this year, and two next year, or, it depends, and they're supposed to be helping us find, wraparound services, so, you know, I said, well, we've put forty thousand dollars into the old creamery, and all but four thousand was, non-tax dollars, it was all raised by the historic society and the, old primary committee, so, you know. They might help us figure it out, if we get it, I says, I, I don't think we got a chance of getting it, she says, well, we don't have many applications yet, so, we, we will see, I mean, we might not make the first cutoff, cut, so.
Thing, I was thinking in terms of what they were talking about, the size of different projects, this is a, could be a very expansive renovation on the building, but it's a small project, relative to what they're talking about, you know, big building, homesteads and things, so I think that, you know, in some ways, it seemed like because of all the work that had already been done, and to improve it and to fix it, and keep it to the place, with the history involved. It seemed like they would, might like a small project.
That was a big pitch for them.
One done, yeah.
That was a big pitch, and I said that we preserved it, cause it was part of the historic fabric of Timoth.
Yeah.
She liked that, that pitch, so, you know, we might get someplace.
Yeah.
We might not, but.
So, do you, what'd you think about?
Does someone wanna entertain a motion to, uh, have Anne, pursue a grant application?
I'll make that motion.
Give me some tips. Pat moved?
Pat moved.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
So, should we send whatever we're starting to write up to everybody?
No, write it up and then bring it to the next, um.
Bring, but we need to do it the twenty-fourth.
It's a simple, it's a simple little form, pages. Intake form, yeah, and then we can report back. We'll know at our fire next meeting, I think, whether we can proceed further or not, so.
Yeah, just go for it, and then, don't ask permission, just.
What about we include the carriage shed, if you could, now we have to clean that out for parking.
We should probably, actually, the, the historical society in the old creamery should probably start thinking about that thing for.
Well, it, it, there was one of the responses, they were in favor of using the creamery for, for selling things and a vegetable stand, but they said, we don't wanna lose the parking for the town and all of this.
And I was interested in that, because it wasn't me. Which normally everybody would think, I mean, that's why we got the old creameries, because everybody was parking there, it actually belonged to the house next door. So we traded them from land down back, square off the property, not these guys, but picked it up before. And so that we could have this, the, for, as our parking.
How much land do we own across the street, or do we own any?
We own fifteen feet around those buildings.
Okay, cause, I, I mean, they've complained before about people parking on the road here impacting, eh, their equipment, and worried about hitting cars, I didn't know if that might be something to entertain of, trying to create some more parking across the road.
There's a lot of water runs down through there, and it comes down, there's, there's a lot of water in springtime, or when there's a big rain.
Probably put a culvert along the road, and we can park over the culvert. That's a big long culvert.
Yeah, that would be.
That'd be expensive.
Oh. Town, trust me.
But.
We'll put it in big over.
This is the thing, they're, they were really being expansive in how they wanted to do things, so I think if, across the street, if that could get, be part of it, and, um, they would say, they're bringing in all their own people, architects and planners, and, you know, they might be saying, yeah, let's, you know, let's put a culvert in, let's make that be part of the thing.
We probably, add, add some parking for the concerts at the old firehouse, and.
I, um, I'm, I'm, hav- having listened to the town going through engineers and architects, I, I'm a, a tiny bit leery about letting people just, eh, there, there's a lot of intellectual headwork that, that, this town has had a history of it just spinning its wheels, uh, I'm just thinking of, previous projects that, things have, like, intentions were, you know, like, and, and it just kind of falls apart, and then it just gets, may not be the, you know. May not be the, you know, so sometimes it's just easier to like. Go get a big culvert, put the culvert.
So, okay, rather than asking anybody.
Instead of asking, instead of trying to find someone to, you know, make a technical.
They definitely have a lot of strings attached, they'll lean on the property and the demands that they're talking about.
They wanna have a lean on the property?
I think that was in my notes, yes.
If, if it ended up loaning us money, it would be a lean until the loan is paid.
Well.
You know, we don't have to agree to any of that.
Right, I pursue, I mean, pursue and let us, yeah, I mean.
The devil in the details.
Yeah.
And it was okay that it was a town building. Um, it would have been perfect if Larry's house was over here, cause then we could have done it, affordable housing, but it's not in the village, so.
Yep. Race it up.
But anyways, I think, you know, if we can get together, okay. So, let's do it next, next week, week after.
Okay.
Either post or chime. Be the first, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll see.
It's Friday.
It would be exciting, yes, yeah.
Uh, next meeting. Day before the first day of summer.
Ready.
Yeah.
I haven't seen a lead though.
That's my curtains. June twentieth.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
First day of summer is what, twenty-first?
Yeah, or it might be the twentieth, I don't know, it goes back from.
Yeah, typically around the twenty-first.
For sure, the calendar said twenty-first.
Yeah. It's Benny's birthday. And then my nephew is born on, uh. The fall equinox. Which is kinda like.
So it's the next meeting on June twenty?
Yep, yes, yes. All right, I think that's it, if any, unless anybody has anybody, anything else. I'll turn the meeting. Butter to boom.
Butter who?
It's about a boom.
Seven fifty-four.
Yep.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.